That is Native American Heritage Month and we've got some dancers in the back over there. So it should be a pretty good show today. Figured I'd go ahead and maybe do a YouTube on this. I'm actually here for another story as much fun as regular city council. Man, those spam calls are annoying. So I don't know if he's gonna be gonna show up today because Kevin Loss. And if you don't know your LA politics, Kevin DeLeon has been at the epicenter of a massive leaked recording scandal now for nearly more than two years. And some people have forgotten this. Um, in fact, on that recording, Kevin DeLeon disparages the Oaxacan community of Mexico, which is the indigenous population. And so it's kind of ironic that today is Native American Heritage Day. And I don't know if he's gonna show up. Like, he was here the other day. He had a really bad five o'clock shadow. He lost his reelection race to Isabel Gerardo. And, you know, I think people are gonna be pretty excited to see him gone. But wait and see if he's actually gonna show up today. Over there. I saw a staff member come out. Pretty good turnout today. Like, some days, city council gets completely packed with people here for a particular issue and it's like impossible to get in. But today, and then other days, it's like totally empty. But today, it's actually got some people on it. We'll see if everybody just leaves here after Native American Heritage Month or not. But I am here for Kevin DeLeon. And if I get a chance to hassle Kevin DeLeon, he's not gonna like it. I don't know if people saw the video clip of me going after Kevin. But he does not like my questions. And it's because I'm really good at what I do as a journalist sometimes, um, in a way that scares people. So I'm able to, you know, make a city council, you know, member nervous. Um, I think he's gonna keep his distance if he sees me, but he has to show up for work first. Um, he's not out of office yet. I believe he's out on December 12th. It's gonna be the final day for outgoing city council members. And we've got John Lee here. John Lee is chatting away. John Lee is currently suing the Ethics Commission, actually, for disparaging him by investigating him over the FBI's Operation Casino Loyal. And if you read my Substack yesterday, you will know that Operation Casino Loyal was the FBI's investigation into City Hall corruption. So John Lee there, uh, was aware of, or I believe took, um, some trips to Las Vegas for real estate developers that involved a lot of money, a lot of booze, women in hotel rooms. And so John Lee here, Kern Price is here too. Kern Price, um, is facing multiple felony indictments. Most related to his wife, actually. There he is. There's Kern. There's Kern. So Kern is being indicted by the District Attorney, right? The District Attorney represents LA County versus the FBI, right, which is the US Attorney's Office or the City Prosecutor's Office. So there's Kern. But Kern's indictments almost relate to his wife and conflict of interest, um, as well as embezzling health benefits because he was actually still married to another woman and he was getting his new wife, uh, city benefits, um, which are actually quite luxurious. Councilman Eunice Hand is looking pretty good, looking regal there. Some people don't like Eunice, but like, I kinda like her. I think they're like, you know, there needs to be some young leadership here. And that the old guard here felt so hard and, you know, ultimately kind of just faded away and was replaced by like, you know, corruption. That it's kind of refreshing that people are willing to at least talk. Now, she's got her critics. People say that she hasn't done enough to clean up Carthage Park. Um, Carthage Park is actually quite, um, it's like the ground zero for fentanyl in the city. And somebody actually replaced the globe on the Prometheus statue the other day with a meth pipe. And redid the signage. So that was kind of funny. I don't know if we're gonna have seats. They've reserved this whole section here for Native American Heritage Month, but nobody is sitting in them. And then everybody appears to be sitting behind. So let's see. I believe these are the people for these seats here. He's checking like, hey, can I go like beyond like this, you know, like, it's a purple tape. Yep, Steph forgot them. So they have reserved seating for Claw. What is Claw? Citizen for Los Angeles Wildlife? Cool. A new one. And I mean, it's important to note, right, they're talking about actual wildlife, not city council members. Because we have a council critters now led by Marquise Harris Dawson. She smiled when I said that. So here we go. We are so late today already. Clock, it is like 10:20 already. City Council was supposed to start at 10:00 AM. No Kevin DeLeon. He was here the other day and he had a really bad five o'clock shadow. I said Kitty Arslavski is here. Tim McCosker is here. We liked him even though he, uh, used to work for the police union. All right, here we go. We're 20 minutes late. We're starting now. Kern Price is still on the phone over there. What is he doing? Maybe it's his like ex-wife calling, being like, you got me indicted for what? Everybody's favorite public comment. It's because people like to hear themselves. No, Kevin is not here. Where is he? He's still getting paid. Loses election. He's still getting paid. He's not here. Oh, he is here. There's Kevin. There's our favorite council critter Wildlife. Does he see me yet? We're putting the camera on him. Oh my God, that shadow is getting worse. Look, look at that. The guy has not shaved in days. He just like stopped shaving. Give us Kern in the back. Who's that? Oh, it's, um, is that Paul Corretts? I think that is Paul Corretts. Give that big F U. All right, so Kern is married, right, to a tenant relocation specialist. And so he has to recuse himself now, just about out of everything relating to real estate. It's almost like he's turning his nose at the idea that he's being prosecuted for this. Kevin and Kern. We're not even in our seats. So we're voting, right? We're voting on this and they're not even in their seats. Okay, so everybody vote. Everybody registered an eye on this. I believe it was like... Because they're needing a monument. Oh, okay, yeah, there's Corretts. So Corretts ended his tenure here by saying fuck you to the audience. And the reason he does that, he did that is because so many public commentators said that. So like two Decembers ago, Paul Corretts was like, fuck you. I think we could say that. And so he's buddying it up there with Kevin and Kern. Maybe it's because Kern is refusing himself from... All right, so housing crisis.
These policies allow for either tenants of...
If anybody's a lip reader, we can use this.
Both of these are used in other cities for affordable housing preservation. We've seen programs at the county level to actually pilot a community land...
Oh, you just covered higher power. It's still not in his seat. That's the mansion tax. So it came out, like, out of the budget for homelessness last year. They managed to not spend money, actually. So there's literally hundreds of millions of dollars that could go for, towards the housing and homelessness crisis. And they are not spending the money. Because the inefficiency in the city is massive. Right, there goes Kevin. See, so we're voting, right? Everybody's already voted, right? So Kevin's not even in a seat. Oh, is he gonna go there now? And Kevin voted yes. So it's kind of like that. There he goes. He's gonna make his way to his seat now. We're voting again. So again, like, this is basically just like rubber stamping. There's no debate about these things. It's just stamped. And here we go, presentations. This is Friday. All right, so Monica's gonna be in Native American Heritage Month. Never mind, Monica defended Kevin DeLeon saying terrible things on the LA Fed tapes, including disparaging the Oaxacan community. I think, here we go. I think it's gonna be Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you. Colleagues, I'd like to commence this celebration and invite...
So Monica's got Native American Heritage Month. Emrod. This guy's an asshole.
Thank you. And I'd now like to introduce Chief Morales and Anthony Morales to give us an opening blessing in our home.
Thank you. Mejiajulie, ya free and welcome to all of you. My name is Chief Red Goan Anthony Morales and I'm accompanied by several of my tribal members and my son Andrew Guy Youngfellow Morales, who will be conducting an opening prayer in our language. We are the descendants of the Gavilino Sanjo Valley Mission Indians whose ancestors inhabited our major village of Yavna, which is now of Los Angeles. Our ancestral tribal land consists of Los Angeles County, which encompasses all of the Los Angeles basin to the north. Angeles National Forests and...
The Range Shore.
Which are now designated as national monuments. To the east, portions of San Bernardino, Riverside County, and to the south, Ariso Creek in Orange County, all along the ocean, west into the Santa Monica Mountains.
So, fun fact, there's not actually a single reservation in LA County. One Native American property managed to acquire one acre. But if you go to like Riverside or San Bernardino or San Diego, you get more reservations.
And now I'd like to invite back Marquise Miller to raise us with a song before we begin the formal presentation. Thank you, Chief Morales, Anthony Morales, Marquise Miller, Ruby Ortega, for helping us properly set the spirit for today. Colleagues, thank you for the privilege and the honor of allowing me to lead this presentation on behalf of great cities alongside incredible tribal leaders and outstanding members of the Native American community to celebrate and kick off the initiation of Native American Heritage Month. Today, we kick off this month-long celebration of the history, culture, and traditions and legacy of Native Americans. But as I say at all the Native, at all the Heritage Months, that we cannot and should not just rely on one month alone. Our histories are far too deep, far too rich, and far too important to only recognize in one month of every year. And for that, I thank you for the privilege and the honor to lead us in this presentation today. Today marks only an opportunity for us to be reminded of the incredible importance of the people that grazed this land from sea to sea prior to European arrival. And I'm privileged to represent 10 different settings, home to a rich and abundant Native American history and community, from Apoeta to the Hala and everything in between. I have been proud to lead on policy issues that have helped to ensure access to policymaking decisions. And I was actually thankful that it was just, I think about two weeks ago, that I was honored by the group for the work in establishing and collaborating with them the first tribal conservation court that is how in Appleberry City Hall. But it was in that moment, amongst all these young academic and, uh, or young, uh, Native American students that are in pursuit of their academic careers, that it dawned on me that in the Olivia Mitchell Youth Council, we have the opportunity to work with intentionality to create space for the people to be properly represented, not just by having two representatives by each council district, but to dedicate two positions to be appointed by the Native American Commission to have youth representation and Native voices on that commission. And I was proud to introduce that motion just on Wednesday.
All right, so some more politicians coming in. I believe that's Zeb Yavorasovski. Okay, so that's really funny because Monica is the one who defended Kevin DeLeon getting caught using derogatory terms.
This month, we lit up City Hall at the starting November to kick off this Heritage Month. On November 8th, we lit it up in observation of missing and murdered Indigenous women, relatives, and families. Last Friday was a recognition for the Native American Two Spirits. This is for people who have a third gender social role in their communities. And it's an umbrella. It's an umbrella term that can encompass a variety of identities and Two-Spirit people may identify as part of the LGBTQ plus or Native House Indigenous queer communities. Tonight, we for every child matters movement in response to the legacy of residential schools which have devastated in...
Is Kevin still here? So...
I want to start this presentation by thanking a few people from my...
He's talking during the presentation. Kevin DeLeon is literally over there snickering during a presentation about Native Americans after getting caught on tape disparaging Native American people in Mexico. See, on Fridays, Friday, they're like show and tell here. He did literally 10 minutes of business, half-heartedly, making $224,000 a year and were on to presentations. And mind you, unless people are mobilized, right, by a particular group, they do not show up here out of interest in government. That guy's an asshole, actually. I don't like him. I was almost sure he was like fighting with a kid over his seat. Slide over. He goes and tells you.
Good evening. Thank you, Councilwoman Rodriguez. Hi, I'm Shawn Imatessa, I'm in Pine Ridge Recreation in Montana. I'm in Pine Ridge Recreation. Hello, my name is Shawn Imatessa. I'm in Pine Ridge Indian Reservation in South Dakota. And I greet you guys for one handshake this morning. It is a true honor to welcome you to the Los Angeles Native American Indian Commission's Native Heritage Month Celebration. I would like to extend my gratitude to Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez for sponsoring our event this morning and to the entire city council for your ongoing support for Native American Indian in Los Angeles. This year marks the 18th anniversary of the city's very first Native Heritage Month celebration. We owe tremendous thanks to those who worked tirelessly to make this a reality, ensuring that we have the space to lead and for future generations. Our theme this year is "Weeding Together: A Community of Tradition, Culture, and Respect." In light of this theme, we are proud to honor three outstanding leaders from our communities who truly embody the values and spirit of what we stand for. So congratulations to Chief Anthony Morales of the Gagueno people. And to Anthony Morales of the Verona Valley Mission Indians. Their contribution to our community and their dedication to uplifting our voice and continuing to inspire fraud. The LA Native American Initiative was established 48 years ago with the mission of supporting funding resources to address the socioeconomic and other challenges and other challenges within our country. Nearly five decades later, we continue advocating for policy change that strengthens our duty and fight for the invisibility and recognition we deserve, both here in Los Angeles and beyond. So again, today, we gather to celebrate the rich history, diverse cultures, and profound contributions of the Native American community. This month offers a unique opportunity to reflect on stories, traditions, and resilience of Native people, both present and past, while honoring the legacies that continue to inspire us. So as we celebrate today, let us put together unity and respect, recognizing the deep connection between Native communities and the land we stand on. This is a time to learn from one another, share experiences, and deepen our appreciation for our rich Native heritage. So thank you guys very much again. Congratulations to our honorees.
One person who generally stands to fall under the radar for all the work on Heritage Months is someone that I know we all collaborate with, colleagues, and that at this time...
So the chief of the Gavilino Gavilino is Anthony Morales.
Good morning. Thanks so much, Councilwoman Rodriguez. It's really an honor to be here...
We're doing presentations, right? Krikorian is outgoing and Harris Dawson is... So Eunice. Kevin DeLeon.
Honoring traditions, innovating progress, and recognizing the Native American journey is how we as Angelinas can support our local Native American communities forge a strong path towards a brighter future. Today, we celebrate and showcase Native American music, art, and performances that also reflect the importance of the land and legacy, fostering a sense of empathy and solidarity. The community's impact is felt every day through its civic leaders, its changemakers, its entrepreneurs, educators, caregivers...
So this guy's a jerk, actually. And he's forcing his way past the dancer right there to go back to his seat.
This year, we continue our city tradition by presenting the 2024 Heritage Month Calendar and Cultural Guide that celebrates the outstanding intellect, talent, and creativity of Native American artists, poets, performers, writers, and actors, designers, and creative professionals here in Los Angeles. It contains visual art and poetry from an amazing selection of established and emerging artists, as well as many art exhibitions, special events, and community galleries. DCA appreciates and has worked with and collaborated with our elected officials and organizers of today's event to bring in inspiration and entertainment with some of the most talented Los Angeles performing artists as part of our Native American Heritage Guide. We also want to very much thank our organizers of today's event. We want to thank the Office of Mayor Karen Bass and the Los Angeles City Council. We also want to...
All right, so Corretts is talking with the cat for us, so... I should almost go over there and tell the fuck off.
And I want to share my gratitude and appreciation for this month's honorees, Chief Anthony Morales, Senator Ruby... Cynthia Ruiz, and Kenny Roberts. We're now actually honored introducing the cover artist for this year's guide, Adrian Chincella. Adrian is a fine artist working in a variety of media with a focus on drawing and painting. As a descendant of the Tonga of Los Angeles, teams of Ashes and Belonging, or lack thereof, span her work. Her drawings are meticulously rendered and often include Native plants that function as both symbols and direct references to longevity with this land, partly declaring "We are still here." Thanks to Adrian for her hard work, and we want to invite her up to be able to say a few words.
Good morning. I approach this one to do this hard stuff, thank you for entering my work on cover. What an incredible honor. I also want to thank you for the very important steps that it has led us made in healing the history of Los Angeles, where for our tribe historically there was erasure. I can't tell you how many times I've run into people within Los Angeles who say, "Oh, I didn't know there was a tribal here." And I don't blame them for that, but I'm so encouraged by the steps you all are making to bring visibility. This piece features my hands, actually. It comes from a very personal place, my weekly hikes in Griffith Park, where there's connection, where our tribe lived and thrived, for me there, and where the Indigenous plant quietly declare "We are still here." The plant featured is blue elderberry, which was used in this in the late for the tribe's healing. I also pictured hands in a gesture, perhaps receiving healing, and also recognizing the healing power of paint, whether it's medical professionals in medicine, whether it's healing power of touch, personally for us, and hands that channel the healing. And I fully believe that as a city, we have much to learn and a long way to go, but that we're making wonderful steps. I love Los Angeles so much, and I'm so honored to be here today, so thank you from the bottom of my heart. Thank you.
And now together, we are excited to reveal the cover of the Heritage Month Guide.
Alright, so we got a cover.
Thank you. And again, another gorgeous collection featuring all of the works that help to really commemorate and celebrate and tell the stories that so often were left out of our history books. So thank you all so much for your collaboration and work. And thank you, Daniels, for you and the team, all of you, and all of us, who helped produce this magnificent collection. So thank you again toward Urban Cultural Affairs as well. And I want to especially acknowledge Juan Garcia and David Navoa, who also have won a Golden Beaus. It is my honor to begin recognizing our nominees and our honorees, other than Chief Morales, leader of the San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians. Chief Morales is committed to the preservation and revitalization of the San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians' cultural practices and traditions. He has overseen initiatives aimed at maintaining the tribe's language, rituals, and customs, ensuring these vital aspects of the identity of their heritage are passed down to future generations. As a cultural fair, Chief Morales keeps traditional cultural stories and customs alive with the community. His efforts ensure that invaluable knowledge and wisdom of the Gavriano are passed down to future generations and fostering the essence of identity and pride among the townspeople. It is my great honor to recognize Chief Morales as this year's Spirit of Tradition honoree.
They're talking about something. I like how Marquis always covers his mouth. Whenever he's having a discussion, he just wants people to hear. Alright, so we are honoring the tribe. It's Friday. It's presentation day at City Council.
I'm going to start off with the, just took a couple words that I want to share with everybody regarding my award. So I'll move on. It's an honor for me to be a nominee, a recipient of the 2024 Native American Heritage Month Spirit of Tradition Award. I thank Los Angeles City Council for this recognition, which also recognizes our tribe, the Baro Be No San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians. This past weekend, I had the honor of attending and participating in the ribbon cutting of an opening celebration of the new addition at the Natural History Museum. As the entrance along the wall is a beautiful girl of a timeline of the beginning of Los Angeles, killer present. It starts with our ancestors, who have been versus time immemorial and are the original ancestors of the bigger of says we were there then. I continue to meet our tribe in whom to share our culture so that it never becomes extinct or erased. I am hopeful we can continue working in the city of Los Angeles now and in the future for the city to acknowledge the contributions of our ancestors in building the foundation of making Los Angeles what it is today. If it's time for us to be heard, it is time for us to be visible. Waha kuwata ta iha luka in the memory of our ancestors. Thank you.
And it is my honor to recognize our next honoree, who for many in this building is no stranger, Cynthia Ruiz. Cynthia is a distinguished
Alright, continuing.
Executive coach and inspirational speaker renowned for her expertise and leadership. Her dedication to Cherokee heritage has been recognized with awards such as Cherokee Nation's Community Leader of the Year and Cherokee Phoenix Southern double team.
This is former City Councilmember Paul Corrects chatting over here.
She serves on the Los Angeles City County Native American Indian Commission for 20 years. Cynthia maintains a strong connection to Native American community in Los Angeles, serving as a dedicated leader and advocate for Native American issues. She mentors numerous individuals within the community and champions critical Native American causes, and plays a pivotal role in organizing and leading Native American events throughout Los Angeles. It is my great honor to recognize Cynthia Ruiz as this year's Spirit of Community honoree.
Oh, I know Correct is here. Correct is here for the animal people. So I think we're doing animals next.
Osio Donalozol, lion mother. My charity name is Lion Mother. And I start everything I do with gratitude. So I want to express my gratitude to Councilwoman Women Prodigus, all the City Council, and the Native American Indian Commission, and along with all the supporters that came out to support us today. You know, 18 years ago, I was president of Public Works, and that's when we started Native American Heritage Month. In my office, we had a small meeting. Chief Anthony Morales was there, Tribal President Rudy Ortega, Paula Starr, Ron Andrade. My mother and myself, under the leadership of Ben Merribe de Osa, we said it's important to celebrate this vibrant Native American community here in Los Angeles. So I dedicate this to my mother because I know that I stand on the shoulders of the strong Cherokee Warrior Women that have come before me, which we always look back and honor our ancestors, but I also am proud to say I dedicate this to the future. I have a three-week-old grandson that came on November 1st when he was a teenager.
He can't go away.
And he is the creator of the future. So I hope that each and every one of us keeps the spirit of community in our hearts, and that we continue this tradition for many more years to come. Thank you very much.
And our next honoree is Kenny Roberts from UTE Barona and Mission Indians.
Alright, so we started 20 minutes late. They did 10 minutes of work, and now we're 30 minutes of presentation.
He is currently producing a graduate degree in Native American Indian Studies. He is passionate about making theaters that centers around Native perspective, assess tribal sovereignty, and challenges settler colonial reality of American culture and society. Kenny is an ensemble matter at Cornerstone Theater Company in Los Angeles. He has been part of a national touring company called Peter Pan, the Broadway musical, which had a three-week run at the Pancake Theater in Hollywood in summer. His career has turned to his ancestral tribal homeland, Sisay, where he has been an artist in residence at La Playhouse, serving on the Community Advisory Council at the Old School, and is under pressure at the Virgin Terrace Theater. And it is my great honor to recognize Kenny Roberts as this year's Spirit of Community honoree.
Alright, so we got proclamation, broke out a proclamation. Okay, smiling.
Um, I'm talking to my wife. I'm trying to speak to her. The thought is, I'm trying to speak to her. The thought, do I want to speak to her? The thought, we're ready to speak to her. Roberts, we have to make sure. The locals don't say they have to. My father's 55. The thought, we're ready to speak to her. The natives, they have to Welsh. Questionable for a lady of the nation, 5. I've won the, and we're all, the Kansas Native American Association. And my father is Ken Raymuggs, and my mother is
I got, said subtitle, speaking Native language.
And I, um, have a photograph of this mission in English. And I always said, "Hi, I'm a little prepared. I'm very excited to be here." But yeah, I just want to take a moment to say thank you to Sean Inmatezaw and the LA Native American Indian Commission for thinking of me for this honor, and of course, LA City Council. I really believe in the power of theater and storytelling and what it can do for our nation and for our communities, for the land that we occupy that you're here on. And I really am just grateful that to be honored at the same place. I want to also say thank you to the Caballero Tonga and the Native American Tonga Nation. This land and this place is very important to me, like someone that went to Philly and lives in L.A. for, for, for 10-ish years. No, that's not all. Anyway, 10-ish years. You know, this land is just very special to me, and I really want to pay my respects to the people in this land that were on, and say thank you for sending me here and having me here for sponsoring me. And I also just want to just give so much gratitude to my family, my high nation, my community. We're having a funeral at home right now for one of our elders. So important to name her Caroline Mendoza, someone that I love and people love very much, and I just want to make her. And I also just wanted to thank my family for being here, my dad's here, my grandparents, and my aunt and uncle, and I'm really appreciative for them for being here, and my many other relatives. I enjoy spending because of you all, and I said this to my mother, who passed away over this year, and I'm just grateful to have community here in Los Angeles, and I appreciate it to you all for having me today. Thank you.
Thank you, colleagues. Thank you to our special honorees and to everyone who has been part of making this moment possible. I want to thank you all and all of our guests who have been part of helping us build this celebration together. And on behalf of the Los Angeles City Council, thank you all for helping us officially commence the official Native American Heritage Month here in the city of Los Angeles. Congratulations.
Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. The person that we've had today, who was supposed to have on November 1st, but folks were very accommodating with Los Angeles Dodgers, and they're willing to bend that they had. So thank you all so much for coming together. We have a member of the Q Council for the
Alright, so, baseball held up, Native American Heritage Month.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Rodriguez, for bringing this presentation forward. Thank you everybody for showing up, always in their true selves and self-powerful, reminding us who was here first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Daley.
A big question I was putting, Councilwoman, what could we do? Thank you very much for encouraging the powerful organization to award you, Anthony Morales, a very long time since I applied, sadly, said in City Council. Cynthia Ruiz, thank you very much for having such a powerful voice as a woman, as a female, as a very woman, a Native American warrior. And thank you very much to Kenny Roberts, Baronas, Damosan, Diego, just, you know, gracias to all of you, to the Native Americans, as L.A. City, as well as County, Native American Indian Commission. Thank you very much for your powerful voice, so much to do every day. L.A. is home to the largest Native American nation in the entire United States of America, easily, supposed to half a million, obviously, supposed to Wyoming, Dakota.
So there's half a million Native Americans in Los Angeles area, right? But there's not a single reservation in L.A. County.
Just recently, in fact, there's a single acre of land Pasadena, actually, Palcedina was gifted back. He looks like shit. He has not been shaving lately since he lost. And I wonder if Robert knows it, if I get to him. Forget what I said on those tapes.
This is a powerful presentation and presence that you all have made here today, which is from the top, you know, that this is Native American
He's so desperate.
Your home, you know, we're occupying it collectively as individuals, and wherever it will be, your home, friend.
He is so desperate. Kevin is gonna be out of work soon, because he lost.
Thank you so much, Councilmembers, for this beautiful presentation. Thanks, our, congratulations to our honorees.
Here's McCosker.
Lovely opening prayer, very powerful. Everything we want, I wanted, because we moved the day, one of our artists from San Pedro, Owen Harrison, Rowan Harrison did not be with us, and he is here through the magic of Facebook, and I want to shout out
Okay, so we're all live streaming in somebody.
I'm going to give a, Rowan, shout out.
McCosker.
Thank you to the community. Really, we really appreciate sharing this with you, and I'm proud of what you've done.
I think next up is animals.
Councilmember, I think this is a reunion, kind of speaking.
Right, Pedia.
To the Department of Cultural Affairs, you know, I really love these things.
Rad.
You can come to my office, enjoy packing the house, because this is one of the, takes perfect work to put this together for the, you know, writing Heritage Month. But I also want to take some time to make sure that I recognize the great work that's been done by some of the members who are here today at the federal level, trying to get our Dr. Dino confirmation federally recognized. I know that's been an uphill battle, but it's something that I very much enjoyed seeing get done, and we should have loved you for keeping that work, so we make sure that we, you know, explain that
So, they don't even have federal recognition, which allowed them to have a reservation. Because if you're gonna give land back, right, like, land would have to come from somewhere, and nobody wants to go with their land.
Not too close, but just to add my
And the state, California, has spent money to buy land back, but not in L.A. County.
And Department of Cultural Affairs for bringing, for bringing this event together and allowing us opportunity to recognize Native American community For bringing this event together and allowing us opportunity to recognize Native American community. I do want to just say that this is the second time in a few months that we've had indigenous voices in this room, songs, prayers, language. And it feels great to be able to welcome it. And I just, I want to extend not only to all of us, this space, your space, and just grateful that you're willing to come here and share the history and the present day of all that you are and all that you do. Thank you so much.
Thank you, colleagues, for all of your remarks. And I want to thank you all for supporting the various motions that were introduced that intentionally worked to create that space, to give that voice and that presence right to the chief and local government. And I look forward to the history being passed on to future generations through the dedication of the three young voices that will be appointed now to serve on the Olympic National Youth Council representing the voices of the Native American Native Nation from the City of County. So thank you all so much for your representation today for helping us kick off this celebration this month, but for including us on it and remembering all real history.
Honesty in L.A. City Council.
Thank you so much. Another deeply grounded applause. For our Native American family and Councilmen and members.
Okay, so. One presentation down.
I want to give the floor to the Congressman, American reporter, for such much success.
Thank you very much, Mr. President.
All right, so Corian is up. All right, so everybody's going to leave now, watch. Because people only come for their thing, right? This is like team sports. All right, I think I can move up now. That guy's kind of a jerk, though. He was fighting with a kid last time during the police commission, police chief hearing over his seat. Like, don't take my seat. The police actually expelled him and the young person. I'm going to move up. All right, so one down, one to go. Did Kevin leave already?
Mr. Chairman, yes, he comes from the earth. And I'm here.
Hey, Wayne. Corrects. Go public. That's Jaroslavsky, right? Daddy Jaroslavsky. No, Ozine, it's Dennis Dean, right? Yeah, I see he looked familiar. And Kevin Daly on is gone. I think Kevin just showed up for Native American Month and then he's out.
Yeah.
Like, gotta say you're sorry. Lost it, is it though? Excuse me, sir, I got my coffee here. You have your coffee? I know, I don't want to take your seat, you know? You went over there. I know, he looks terrible. Like, he's not shaving anymore, he's drinking. Yeah.
To defending its food, and building new bridges between the front.
I know. I'm surprised he's even showing up. I, I mean, like, I was shocked that he's even still showing up to council considering, like. Yeah. It, it's such a, that thing is such a huge lie. Yeah. I think he got picked up to filing that lawsuit because the evidence just isn't there. And no returning the right money except Mark Garagos would file that. Hmm? Yeah.
Thank you so much. Welcome back to the general. I mean, looking forward to hosting in February, the mayor of Bordeaux. And during the city council, we're going to celebrate.
What I was trying to figure out was if the state attorney general had allowed him to be in the settlement talks with the city, because this is the source of that investigation, right? Like, conflict of interest, they wouldn't answer. Boo.
Thank you all so much for allowing us.
Nithi Hu, can't spend homeless money.
Today, saying goodbye to a piece of L.A. housing history. We are saying goodbye to two incredible leaders who retired only these past few weeks.
Thank God.
And with expertise and guidance, I know I was.
We're going to pop that ticket.
You will all miss. We start with a farewell to Anne Sewell, who is, who just stepped down.
All right, which one is this one about?
Los Angeles Housing Department.
Okay, so.
She came to us after a very long career, working on a path of, you know, fighting, fighting, really like for housing. And now she is embarking on a well-earned retirement. As head of the housing department over the last four years, she played a pretty, pretty role in leading the city in challenges.
He's going to come and chase on L.A. off.
To do this work, that he would be leading the department through the COVID-19 pandemic.
She's, she's just getting around.
You embarked on one of the most ambitious.
I, I support your right to go wherever you want.
Ambitious stabilization programs in the history of not just this city, but of this entire country. And Anne shepherded the department through that work. And it was monumental work. It was monumental work. Anne's relentless emphasis on the production and preservation of affordable housing has resulted in our city achieving.
City comptroller Kenneth Behia did an audit. They didn't spend $510 million that they had on housing and homelessness. So this guy's stepping down. This is like putting lipstick on a pig right now. Because Los Angeles has the largest homeless population of any major metropolitan area in the country.
Under Anne's leadership, the city of Los Angeles enacted and L.A. H.H. implemented. Robust, competitive areas, kind of questions, some of those robust in the nation. And I know I was very lucky to have worked closely with her on that effort. So at the start and before I began my work here, but my staff, myself, her staff, and her leadership were crucial in moving those forward. Their work helped us to provide.
Yeah, Kevin's gone.
$1.6 billion.
I don't think he's going to come back either.
$1.6 billion in emergency rental assistance to the city's renters and landlords. It implemented significantly expanded citywide tenant protection ordinances, including the just cause for addiction ordinance, which expanded rental protections to an additional 300, 400, 400,000 households. Anne established.
It's not audited.
And now expanded and continued with U.L.A. funding the addiction defense program. A singularly new achievement for this city, which has now fed into the creation of our Right to Counsel program. Are you impressed yet?
They still don't want to let audit, just sit out front in the chair.
And finally, under her tenure, Anne also proudly saw, oversaw.
He's waving, had to wave back.
1,000 accessible housing units just this year. I think we are at a time when housing has become absolutely essential to this city and the work that it does. I have been so proud to have been able to partner with her on her vision of what the city's role in providing housing has been and could be for the future. And as kind of a parting, parting piece of wisdom to all of us, she joined our leadership teams with us at the Housing Homelessness Committee just on Wednesday to talk to us about how much more lies ahead. And I think Anne, what you have done is to light the pathway for us in what you've done already. And now what we will have to do is follow your needs, continue your work, expand your work, ensure that we actually build the systems that we need in Los Angeles to see through your vision of a city that can house every single resident with safety and with dignity. So thank you so much, Anne Sewell. And now I want to turn it over to Patricia Keen, our current executive officer and active general manager of the housing.
So if you pay your bribes, right, in Los Angeles, you can get your permits.
It seems like a lifetime ago that our country was also on the verge of change.
Thanks, FBI.
And then the one word that kept screaming for us either as a dream or a promise was hope. Hope that long entrenched problems could be solved and longstanding mindset could be changed. Hope that progress would be made. And in 2016, MDRHH was adopted. You'll hear a lot about that for HHH, but it was adopted with the hope of changing how we funded the production and support of housing. And it did. We built more units than planned for less money per unit than assumed and faster than intended. In 2022, MDRHH doubled down on that collective hope and commitment to investing in the issues to our affordable housing.
Yes, sir, I understand.
And all along the way, Anne Sewell was there. She was there pushing HHH from side to side, helping to get it adopted. She was there helping to make sure U.L.A. would get implemented in a way that would get results.
So this is Tracy Parker here.
She's been around the affordable housing world for well, let's say, a long time now. And that's all that she has been there. Sometimes quietly and sometimes not so quietly pushing for meaningful change and making memorable progress.
She looks mad.
Anyone who has worked with Anne over the years in the various ways that she has served the affordable housing community knows that she has a steady way of helping everyone around her get results. She doesn't listen to the no we can't kind of answer and instead talks about what it means. She has been a mentor, a leader, and a cheerleader to so many in the housing universe that don't really tell you she's the housing fairy godmother. But her powers don't involve waving a magic wand. They involve sharpening a pencil to figure out how to make this project work and calling a question when it's wrong. And always, always opening doors and paving a pathway for those around her to do their best work and find opportunities for growth. But for anyone who knows them and has benefited from her presence and leadership in meetings, on boards, and in any conversation where critical housing policies are safe, they know that perhaps most critical contribution she has made is her seemingly unending well of only the best dad jokes. So in tribute to the fitting Anne Sewell, I tee you with my favorite dad joke. What is the nearest thing to eating? Myself.
That was funny. That was a funny dad joke. Everybody needs a daddy.
The fairy godmother of housing herself, Anne Sewell.
Lovely, humbling, very grateful. And I was going to cover many accomplishments that the department had done in that quite the huge.
I should collect your pension, move to a non-taxic, like Tennessee.
I was just going to hit the highlights. I joined the department in July.
It's a good gig, man.
I would need to come to the department.
Fuck it, I'll take it.
Make my drive around. I figured now how to sneak back to the offices and get our work chairs and take them home with us. And the first thing I did was call everyone at the council.
Don't forget to wipe the brines for the FBI.
And asked the question of what should the department start doing, stop doing, do more of? And the answers were really great and everything. And so there was, of course, the others complaining that HHH is going to, or we should do something about that because it actually is going to.
Do you have a live channel?
A what?
Do you have a live channel?
Yeah, I'm on YouTube.
That was goal number one. Let me take, let me take a picture of your YouTube address so I'll watch it later.
Sure. I'm, uh, oh, I'm Zachary, I'm Zachary Ellison. If you ever see that, I can show you.
The accessibility lawsuit settlement that the councilor mayor had entered into that we've not done anything to comply with.
Z A C H, A R Y? C H? A R Y? Oh, A R Y. Uh, space. Ellison E, L, I S O N. Top one, that should work.
Which one is this one?
That's me right there.
This one?
Click subscribe.
I'm going to take a picture of it so I can do it at the time.
Sure.
I love my classes at home too.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I read about city council and about all kinds of things in Los Angeles. You can find my writings there, um, it's the Substack link.
I'll check it out.
Sure. Impress.
And also expanded.
I don't want to get too rudicat, I mean.
And then the fourth thing that was really interesting is that just, I believe, we must.
And actually, I wrote about this, uh, this week with Rufliz. How they are expediting permitting in order to build housing faster so they can meet state calls. But she is out. I believe she's been here for a very long time too, which would take us all the way through the FBI's Operation Casino Loyal, the FBI's investigation into city hall corruption around development. And if you read my Substack yesterday, I was at the hearing for one of the defendants yesterday. I believe it's one of eight people who's been prosecuted as part of this FBI operation. And his defense that he paid a bribe, right, to former councilman Weezear, is that he was unaware and simply engaged in free speech. I don't think it's going to work.
And then, of course, my own team, you know, Kenny and Patricia, communication people who've been breaking, sharing, and talking. And Red Good, who has opened my eyes to what constant communication which the council has been really achieving for apartment. And I really appreciate that.
And actually, Housing Department and Planning Department are two different offices, but they are related. Okay, so she says that her story, right, is that the voters have to be the ones to do more about homelessness. But the city last year felt to spend $510 million allocated for housing and homelessness. And actually, she's losing the voters. Because the city is so ineffective at spending the money, it does get allocated. People are actually becoming less likely to vote for money to address homelessness, basically because of what they call the homeless industrial complex, um, along with the poverty pimps, which is what this is.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Roman. We have a few members on the queue.
Of course you do.
Thank you so much.
More to worry than office stations.
You have been a real pleasure to work with and your entire team. Patricia has always been the kind of partner I'm trying to go to. But thank you for, you know, it's been tough. It's been tough and doing it without a place for you to convene on your own. Because, you know, unfortunately, our housing department is unhoused. But, you know, I really appreciate.
That's not funny.
Your good humor and just your ability to help us get to a better place where the housing quality is really challenging, you know, the housing needs that we have in the city of Los Angeles. You've been an incredible steward for the team.
People literally die on the streets of Los Angeles because they don't have housing.
And during some pretty volatile times. So, thank you so much.
What she means by volatile is the FBI came through here and threw down some serious ban hammer.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Roman.
Great, thank you again. This is a tough day to see you moving forward. You've been incredible as my colleague, Steady Hand. And institutional knowledge like that is, that is gonna hurt all of us. I'm not saying don't leave, but it is gonna hurt us because you have incredible institutional knowledge.
Oh, no, please leave.
You've always been.
Please leave.
A pleasure to work with and a friend and someone who had that expertise.
So, just. Buckeyes. Absolute buckeyes.
Came to your doorstep, something nobody should have to deal with. Especially as a, not, you know, elected official should deal with it, but certainly no staff member or a member of the city should have to have to protest in the case of happening. But you dealt with some of that nightmare stuff.
Yeah.
And you dealt with it.
Why were the protesters at our house?
We have to have a star, which is how do we make our city better? How do we get that housing? And I'm very grateful to you and all that you've done and what you've been doing. You know, I know.
There's a degree of delusion.
Be careful what you offer. You said we're still be able to call you, so you may very well be doing that. So, thank you very much.
What we're calling you is goodbye.
Good luck and be great.
Enjoy your retirement.
Thank you, Mr. President.
So, the mayor is actually denying the controller's audit report that they didn't spend the money that they were given. Kevin showed up for Native American Heritage Month and he was out of here, man. He's, he's getting paid for this, right? He gets paid so to be a city councilor, he can't even bother to show up?
You, we've all lived through extraordinary times. And Los Angeles already faced such challenges in the housing market even in normal times. And then to have COVID on top of that and all the other things that we've gone through recently here. And have you been held, you have to deal with all those crises? That was, that was a lot to ask of any community. And so, along with those challenges, came some opportunities as well. And the opportunities were not easy, so easy to handle. Having this enormous infusion of federal housing assistance coming in. That sounds like a good thing.
Oh, he's back. Look, he shaved. He shaved. No, came back in, he's gonna run back out.
In response to the emergency that's reported and you were able to figure out.
He's gonna go talk to Marquis, he's gonna get excused. He's still under investigation by the California Fair Political Practices Commission because Kevin directed money from his office holder account to a nonprofit to do food giveaways. And then he put his picture on the van. Smiling, smiling Kevin Delio. Smiling.
What is it that I appreciated most always in dealing with you? Is you were able to.
Give Amr the hug there, thanks for trying to get me out of trouble. I'll be out of here soon, I'm gonna be done. Staff member, you're losing your job.
And ideally, it's a yes. But yes or no is better than nothing at all.
Oh, my God. He looks terrible. Talking to Marquis.
And this is a really important trait for any general manager to have.
I'm gonna go back in her seat.
You were willing to speak truth about it. And you were willing to tell us.
There's the eyes of a man who is living a lie.
And willing to say, no, I'm sorry. You can't do that. No, I'm sorry, you may really want to do that, but sorry, it's against the law. You can't. We're sorry, there's no way to do that. We're sorry, you're brilliant ideas.
This is why we're having this conversation.
Could be done, you could get so much more bang for the buck with that money by doing these subjects. You were willing to do that. And you were also willing to do that to people with bull horns screaming through your bedroom window. And as Bob said.
Not D O A.
That should never be a part of what any public servant has to endure. And yet you did it. Now, we get elected, you didn't get elected. You know, we have to stand for election. It's one thing when we're targeted that way. But for somebody.
Kevin, Kevin, Kevin. Black Lives Matter going after Kevin Delio for saying racist shit on tapes.
But you did it and you kept your eye on the ball and you kept doing the work. And for that, I'm grateful to you. And I want you to know how much of a legacy you leave as you leave this building physically. There's still gonna be a lot of Anne Sewell around here. And there's certainly is gonna be in the work that you've done for the city of Los Angeles. So, thank you, congratulations.
Thank you so much, Mr. Ray. Very much.
All right, so he came after this.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I don't know if Councilor Popovich described me, you know, at the end of, no, you can't do this, no, you can't do that. You're trying to push.
Yeah, they're talking about you, Kevin.
I want to say, I want to recognize you for your strong advocacy because you've always carried yourself in a very elegant, a very dignified manner.
Unlike you.
A big secret that we've had are differences, you know, the way we look at it. But it comes to financing, the whole variety of issues. But always, Harvard, tremendous respect for you as well as your team. I know that we've all been on the same page. We care deeply in reducing the most affordable housing units for both unhoused and fully compounded as quickly and as financially feasible as possible. But even among controversial issues, you've always again carried yourself with elegance and a manner that's dignified. Paul just mentioned a few moments ago, screaming and yelling, going to your house, you know. It doesn't make a difference if you're on the left or on the right or in between. Elected or appointed, no one deserves that. I won't stress. There's so much about you, right? And that's.
What Kevin means is he doesn't deserve that.
The whole nation has a housing crisis, I'm just saying. Especially if you're here because the CAS, you have nots. So, you navigating a lot with your staff, the ability to draw down dollars, state dollars, federal dollars, you know, ballot initiative, generation. Here's a recipe to put in many, do some positive positive. It isn't. I think that collectively, you will be, you guys, of all the knowledge and all the experience that you have brought to this issue. So, I just want to say, thank you so much for incredible commitment.
He looks so terrible. Like you can literally see the alcohol dripping off of him. He hasn't shaved for now for days. I think Kevin needs help with alcohol. Pobrecito, por favor. He's sweating. All right, so it's air conditioned in here, right? Like, I'm in a full suit. He's sweating. He hasn't shaved. Slurring his words. He looks terrible. That was the longest, most winding Kevin Delion speech ever, I think. Kevin looks terrible. He is not taking losing well. Kevin Delion looks really terrible. Like, you can literally see he's sweating. Yeah, we're not sweating like that. Yeah, he's, I think he's gonna be drinking every night. Isabel's gonna take his job. He, maybe he's sick or something, but he just ran back, he just ran back out. I mean, maybe he's sick, but he's not shaving now. I mean, it's that, like, yeah. He's whiskering up. He's slurring his words. He's drinking every night. He's showing up, starting up the council that way. I mean, I almost helped the guy, you know? Yeah, like Alcoholics Anonymous. Let's send Kevin Delion to Scientology rehab. There's an idea. Yes, yes. This is why I came back. I'm gonna call his office and be like, is he all right? Because I mean, like, it's gotta be hard to lose like that to like, and he tried so hard to steal that election. Um, he's living a lie and he's gotta show up here just to like save face, but he's not doing it well. Yeah. He's probably gonna worry the BLM's gonna start showing up to his house again, you know? They should. They should be like, Kevin, get help. I love city council. Gobbo loves city council too. This is why I've been writing about this guy for like two years. The wheels are really coming off. I'm trying to get him help. I'm gonna call his office. Yeah.
Many of us in this building actually were the proponents of it. And then it was Milan in the public eye for a long time.
You know, the word about Kevin Wright is his staff. Like Kevin is down in his staff members for many years and then he helps them get jobs. Moves up, it's predatory. I don't wanna name names, but that's what I've heard.
Learn from mistakes and fix it. But also to recognize what we did there. It was monumental and we have to thank so much for that. So, thank you all so much and happy retirement, Anne.
All right, Roman, you gotta spend the money now though, right? Like, $1.8 billion budget for housing and homelessness. They can't spend all of the money even in the nation's commonest capital, so. Get your picture and your app. Hasta la vista. Sorry, it's Kevin Stafford, she came back. I forgot her name. Something Murphy or something like that.
As we actually say goodbye to another stalwart of the housing ecosystem here in the city of Los Angeles. And I welcome all our friends from Hackla here.
Okay, so Hackla, Housing Authority for the City of Los Angeles, I believe, which is different than LA Housing Department, which is different than the Planning Department.
Welcome, welcome, welcome to our, to Doug Batry. Welcome and goodbye to Doug Batry. Someone who has been with the city actually even longer than Anne Sewell, but because of the nature of Hackla.
Man.
Authority here, it's gifts in our city's ecosystem. Of course, a national housing leader and a guiding force for increasing housing opportunities. For Angelino, who has been central to the work around affordable housing right here. Despite being born and raised in the West, his years of service in the city of Los Angeles, I think at this point, make him a true Angelino through and through. He began his professional career in public service working for the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, where he specialized in model cities, urban renewal, and communities development, loss grant programs.
I don't know if Kevin's gonna come back out again.
He's the president of the National Equity Fund, the nation's largest source of equity financing for low and moderate income housing, where he actually initiated.
I have to get some screenshots from the city broadcast. He looks terrible.
...of over 28,000 affordable housing units with real estate assets valued in excess of $3 billion. And today is considered one of the most successful funding pools in the US to advance affordable housing goals and really led by Mr. Doug Batry. In 2010, during a time of real challenges for the city on many of these issues, he joined the city family, becoming general manager of that housing department. But a few short years later was appointed as president and CEO of the Housing Authority during a time of real transition. And I, those of you who were here at that time.
Goodbye, Hackla. So, the city has more acronymed agencies than any one person should know.
As someone we could trust, at a moment when the housing authority was really struggling with the issue of trust, I can't emphasize how important his coming into the organization was at that moment and helped to stabilize a major agency in the city for continued and future work. Doug has been serving at Hackla for a number of years. And on a personal note, you know, there are many achievements there at Hackla over that time. But I wanted to talk today about my personal kind of understanding of his impact there. First of all, the.
I think we're doing public comment, Anne, I don't know how many more they should be. I think we saw the animal people, that's why Corretz was here.
They talk to us, they provide data.
That woman is giving me the eye now.
When I asked them to start coming into the housing committee meetings, because they're part of the housing.
The guy with the tattoos, smells like cigarettes, so bad.
They had been coming regularly before, they said yes. When I asked them to ensure that 4,000 housing vouchers would be matched to residents here in the city of Los Angeles, we're experiencing homelessness, that we wouldn't give a single voucher back to the federal government ever during COVID, they said yes.
Let's see if I can grab anybody, we talked about housing audits.
And because of that, that is an essential reason why we were able to see a reduction in street homelessness for the first time in so many years.
3%, or is it? So, this could either be 3% or 10%. The numbers are kind of in dispute. There's been an extremely small drop. And they're spending more money than ever and then failing to spend a lot of the money that they're being given. All right. Corretz is moving up again.
But with willingness and expertise and with care and grown the program. They have taken on new innovative forms of the city actually adding to its public housing stock. And they've said yes, even when other city departments have said no. So, for all that, we have Doug to thank for his guidance and leadership and for his gentle and kind approach to all of us who ask questions.
Another one bites the dust. Another one bites the dust.
How to move forward. So, thank you, Doug, for being a mentor, thank you for your years of work. And thank you for your service.
So, we had LA Housing Department, LHD. And we had, this is Hackla, the Housing Authority of the City of Los Angeles. Don't ask me what the difference is. Another one bites the dust. The speech. Kevin's still not here. Los Angeles is the least of a model city in the United States, maybe.
But, and I've always enjoyed it. And I saw after all my time, primarily in Chicago, which now Chicago, now I'm coming to Los Angeles. I couldn't turn it down. Your Rosa, I'm serious, with the general manager.
Ah, Chicago. The windy city. GoPuppa. GoPuppa has more credibility than the Housing Authority does. Mind you, like, the number of people who die on Street of Los Angeles, right, has actually been going up, despite more spending, despite more agencies, despite more lawsuits, more people are dying on the streets. Uh, we went from three day now, I think it's up to like ni- like six to nine? City employees, right, they make bank. They make bank. If they lasted that long. And so I was really surprised when three different layers, I found out only lasted that long. Put together, we, we took the staff that we had there, uh, and we put together a really good senior leadership team, most of whom are with us here today that, that are up here, that they're the ones who respond. If I yell at these people right now, I'll probably get in trouble. But they deserve to be yelled at, because the numbers are not good. In fact, they're getting worse. More people are dying on the streets of the City of Los Angeles than ever before. The number of vacant properties that we have, including properties that have been developed for homelessness, that are not being used because they are bad at doing their jobs, is absurd. Adios. A younger person is gonna take your job. The world will go on without you. Goodbye. I don't think Kevin DeLeon is coming back. Probably has to go get his noon ring. Alright, so Padilla is here. Park is chatting up Front. Roman's at the podium. Rodriguez is in the back. Soto Martinez, I haven't seen Hugo here yet today. Yarstovski was here earlier, but she's on, no, sh- nope, she's not here, out here either anymore. Marquis Harris Dawson is at the podium. I see Bloomingfeld. Kevin DeLeon is gone. I can't see the other side. This is the most dysfunctional city government in the entire United States. Like, the degree of mediocrity on display here today is, I've been watching this now for a couple of years closely, it's actually getting more mediocre. Talking about what? They're building shit, and then they can't put people into it. There were people sleeping outside of city council this morning on a stepsill as I came in, and they actually swept the area between the federal courthouse and here because it was getting used as evidence in a lawsuit against them over their failure to address this. And so the city put a fence out there to block off the sidewalk. I just realized I'm actually mis-matched. So Kern's wife makes her money getting people out of their apartments so the developers can redevelop it. And that's why he's in trouble, is because he voted on her projects, which is a conflict of interest. And then he didn't effectively divorce his first wife enough. And so he was actually married to another woman at the same time, and then he was, they were both getting better benefits from the city. Later. Later. Kosker's still here, doing his job, not having a side conversation like Tracy Park. Kevin DeLeon is gone for his, uh, his new? Kevin's gonna need a drink. This is the most dysfunctional city government in the entire United States.
Thank you so much, Mr. Kosker, and, um, this country, I'm sure there are many things that you are far more proud of than this, but it's very special to me, you're the only general manager in the City of Los Angeles with whom I have attended a Kendrick Lamar concert.
Oh, so Marquis went to a Kendrick Lamar concert with Guthrie. Who knew? Who knew? They not like us. Probably the only people who can afford Kendrick Lamar tickets, to be honest. He's gonna get his bucket of gold, and he's gonna go sit in his home until he dies, and he's gonna pay a reduced tax, you know, pop- reduced property tax. They're not gonna fund the schools. The next generation is gonna take the burden of the baby boomers. He's gonna enjoy retirement. Okay, so Bloomingfeld is up with, I think he's with the animal people. No, maybe not. Kevin DeLeon is long gone. Heather Hutt is here. John Lee is here. Macosker, Hernandez, and Krikorian are having a conversation. Krikorian imparting years of wisdom. I know you missed Hernandez, the only one who wants to talk to him still. Kevin DeLeon. Bloomingfeld's at the podium. Tr- uh, Tracy Park is sitting in Kevin DeLeon's chair. That's not Kevin DeLeon. That's Tracy Park. I've come to a lot of these. This one is really bad today. What? Alright, so I think this is the Winnetka Neighborhood Council, up in the valley. Helicopter, noise in the background. Alright, so Tracy Park is now talking with Krikorian. Gonna get that boomer wisdom before he's out, because Krikorian got charmed outright, and he's being replaced by his protege, Adrian Nazarian. I have seen a lot of these meetings, and today, I think, is the least functional I've seen this. And there's been a lot of dysfunction here, like. There's no police chief nominee this afternoon. There's, there's nothing else happening. I think they're, they go into committee. They have like two committees this afternoon? I don't know if I'm gonna bother attending their committee meeting, say. This is show and tell. Show and tell. The show and tell city. Like, literally, GoPuppa is the most charismatic man here right now. Kevin DeLeon has not reappeared. I think he's done. He needs a nap. He got up, he did his, you know, his little bit, and he's done. I'm gonna write him up. 600 people are gonna read me, writing about how Kevin DeLeon looks like he needs to stop drinking. Got scolded by the police. I was gonna write about Trump and, like, left wing election conspiracies, but I might have to write about city council again. So neighborhood councils are under the Department of Neighborhood Empowerment. Done. Sup, ganja girl? Welcome to the most dysfunctional city government in the United States. It's Friday here, which means it's presentation day, so we're on our fourth presentation. They did 10 minutes of actual legislation, started 20 minutes late. Kevin DeLeon looks like he's been drinking. I can barely get here, um, incident in his seat, despite making $224,000 a year after being voted out of office for another few weeks. And it's sort of thin out here. People came, you know, people come for their things, and then they go. The neighborhood councils are actually almost more serious than the actual city council, believe it or not. Whoa. Yeah, Winnetka in the valley. It's like a fairy tale. If you just tell enough fairy tales, right, all the time, people will believe your lies, you'll never get called out on them, you'll never have to engage in any accountability. You can just go on and on and on and on with your lies. Lying is extremely effective. Um, Trump-proof lying is effective. You can lie about everything and anything, and it'll work. It'll work without end. The, the neighborhood councils are more functional than the city council. You guys got that? Yeah. Hey, i- it's still better than this. Th- this is not functional today. I mean, like, th- there's literally not even a quorum here right now. Oh, Roman came back. She's got one more. For the most part, they're better. I mean, we were able to get 10 neighborhood councils that wanted them to do the lived experience advisory commission, but I agree, there's probably some that are not very functioning. But it's still, like, more operable than the city council itself here is, which is. Alright, so Corretz is here. Yeah, exactly. Like, eh, I've been watching this now for year, for several years, like, closely, and just the degree of not doing business here is actually going up under, under Harris Dawson. Krikorian actually at least had, like, things he wanted to do. Um, I'm almost worried now that Krikorian is leaving, because this is getting to be more performative. And, like, people love performances, right? But at the same time, and like, it's Friday, it's Friday here, right? Like, people are literally dying on our streets. Um, police are shooting people, buildings are burning down, people are, people are getting dubbed out of their minds, um, all across the. People are, people are getting dubbed out of their minds all across the city and this is what we're doing here. Okay, so number one, wildlife. That's why I figured why Coretta's here. And Coretta ended his tenure here by saying fuck you to the audience, which is what the audience, of course, has been saying many times for many, many years here. So, loves animals, though. And Hitler loved animals too, I think. I just have to laugh at this. I mean, like, I try to like treat this like it's serious, you know? Because like, I have a master's in public administration, like, I'm educated to look government. Oh yeah, she, she knows, she's figured out who I am because I started showing up to more of her meetings writing about her. So, her press person probably briefed her. Plus, you know, it's kind of the camera effect, right? You put a camera on somebody, they start looking. She just looks mad. I mean, this is a city that killed its mountain lion, right? Like, P22 was our mountain lion of Griffith Park. And P22 died from rodenticide. I saw a dead coyote driving down the freeway the other day and I reported to Caltrans, just gotta remove it at least, you know? So, this is P22, this is our lion who is no longer with us because we killed him. And of course, it's deer hunting season. If you wanna go shoot deer, now is your time. Get that camo, you can go out. You can shoot the deer in Griffith Park. I'm kidding, there's no deer in Griffith Park, as far as I know. And... The lion's dead. They killed the lion. Yeah, they killed the lion, threw it aside. The homeowners are there. Yeah, people, people. That's the truth. The lion is dead, right? The lion they just showed is dead. It's dead. And I love mountain lions, like, I love nature, but like, it's a joke. We can barely build a single wildlife cross. They even had a big funeral for the mountain lion. It was the go-to event for the city, was the funeral for the mountain lion. Things we don't hit with our cars. Yeah, stop killing shit with your cars. Kevin DeLeon has not reappeared.
This is where we come in. Let's use today to not only honor their success, but to pledge our continued support for their mission. Because I'm excited about what this city of Los Angeles will look like and be like with having candidates like those who are here with CLAW here today.
So, this is CLAW. That acronym is just bad.
Thank you so much for coming up with your field and leading this presentation and recognizing CLAW today.
Thank you, Chim Chim. You know, there was a lot of hope for Nithia, right? Like, Nithia was supposed to be the socialist savior, like the liberal champion, but like, the actual results have not been there. And then she keeps voting for the police stuff, even though she said she wasn't going to. GoPuppet, GoPuppet is wildlife at City Council. Are we gonna show P22 again? It's just the same loop. Yep, there it is. So, they killed the mountain lion. Like, the mountain lion is dead. So, it's the memory of the lion. Mind you, the coyotes have been here longer than the people and so have the lions, right? She's not talking about the police. I did not go to P22's funeral. In fact, like, I think the tickets got incredibly hard to get. It was, it was like an environmentalist concert. Oh, it's gonna be Coretta's now. Be like, fuck you, Coretta. Yeah, he's clawed his way back in. Ah, it's really funny, really funny. Look at the guy who ended his time at City Council saying fuck you to us. Fuck you, Coretta. I know I shouldn't, but seriously, fuck him. The dead mountain lion again. Ticket up and fuck comedian. Oh, staffers. She's got something in those bags. She's got a coffee. Tracy Park is back over here chatting with her friend. I wanna know who Tracy Park's friend is. I don't know if anybody knows who that guy is, but I'd like to know who he is. They look cozy. Tracy Park at CLAW. Our DC mountain lion again.
And so, rather than killing off rodents, we're killing off all of their predators and CLAW has helped us work in the opposite direction. Reducing rodenticide, putting up fire metal boxes in various areas to bring back the predators rather than to poison the rats and all the surrounding species. So, they've done amazing work. I'm very excited that they've been recognized and thank you, colleague, former colleague, for having done so.
City Council is always a party. But I think Kevin DeLeon was partying harder than anybody else last night. I'm actually gonna ask his office for comment. I'm gonna be like, is Kevin drinking? Is he not able to show up to City Council anymore? Maybe he should just resign, like everybody wanted, you know? Oh, Tracy Park yawn. I think more people should come to City Council, if you ask me. Alright, so Park is here. Padilla's gone. Ramon at the podium. Rodriguez, I haven't seen her in a while. Soto Martinez didn't show up today. Jaroslavski is here still. Harris Dawson. Bloomingfeld at the podium. Kevin DeLeon is gone. Krikorian was here, but now he's not here anymore. I don't see Eunice Hernandez either. Heather Hutt is there. John Lee is gone. I think Macosker's over there? Price is coming back. Mind you, this is a city that's actually ignoring its youth climate activists. They want a climate clock being installed in this chamber. They want a ban on new cells of cars, gasoline cars. And with the city to develop a greenhouse gases plan and the city won't do any of that. Padilla is here. She's coming back out. She had like her coffee break or something in the back. She's got a snack. Oh, Boomer Icon. Jane Goodall. Yeah, you know, it's worth coming and seeing the show. Now, like, sometimes, like, they are doing serious business. And then other times, like today, it's like Friday, it's like presentation day. So, they had like ten minutes of business and it's been hours of presentations now. Native American Heritage Month, Housing Department Retiree, Paco Retiree, Naron Animals. I don't know how much more of this we have. It's pretty ripped out. Maybe there's like a funk thing or something, but... I, I think that people should come and start streaming here just to show how, like, how much of a circus this is sometimes. And it's not to disrespect, like, I'm sure CLAW is doing actual work, but like, this is a production, right? It's all production. And like Fridays are the most produced days. I was gonna try to get at Kevin DeLeon today, but he is making himself scarce, probably because he has a hangover. That's right. Put a sign up and tell the animals where to go. Maybe they can buy a new mountain lion. We might not have a choice. I'm gonna ask Ramon, like, what happened to P22, Ramon? What happened? What did you do to P22? Good job, CLAW. Have to have like five diversity organizers. CLAW has been recognized. There he goes, council member, fuck you. Is it for Native American Heritage Month? So, I think this is how they're suppressing public comment, right? Like, prick the food out. Alright, we're gonna do dialing. Alright, so, Macosker not here. John Lee chatting. Heather Hutt yawning. Eunice Hernandez. Krikorian not here anymore. DeLeon not here anymore. Bloomingfeld going back to his seat. Harris Dawson here. Jaroslavski here. Soto Martinez not here. Rodriguez was here earlier but left. Ramon back in seat. Krum Price is here. Tracy Park is still chatting. She's been chatting with that guy the whole meeting. They must be like something. And then Emelda Padilla is here. Padilla. I was at the, her debate with Marissa Alcaraz when she was running to replace Nury. Actually, I like Emelda. Like, Emelda has a little bit of class too, but... Like, Emelda has a little bit of class too, but she, she'll throw an elbow, but she has like a little bit of class, like, more than Tracy Parky. Oh yeah, everybody here breaks Brown Act. And like, one of the historical things about the LA Fed tapes, settlement, it's been, at least the document was leaked to the LA Times, the draft judgment was that they need Brown Act training. And they need government training, because this is not a serious government. What this is, is a circus. And at the circus, right, everybody's got, you know, their cages and got their animals. And they just kinda like get conglomerated together. And then you have the carnies, right? Like, you know, like, the people running the circus. And so like, basically, like, the staffers and the media, um, you know, it's kinda like the carnies. Alright, run to public comment. I, I would do public comment, but I wanna excoriate DeLeone, but he's not here. Alright. Daniel Gus. To start. They did. I don't see her in here. Maybe she's getting food. Alright, so. Again, I don't think this is even quorum. But there's no, there's no quorum rule here, right? Like, anywhere else it's gonna be quorum. She's coming back. At the party. Alright, here comes the dodo, I think. Tracy Parky smiling. She's just pointing. Like, what? Did you guys see that? She's just pointing and smiling. I think Tracy's got all the diction. He's right there, mom. I don't know if I can show that. She's pressuring.
I'm thankful that I'm willing to come and speak today, and I want to say that, first off, I would like to say this. When you guys asked, I appreciated that when Miss Cut came back from her day to come and assist us with the place, just in the facility, as well as Mr. Armstrong, they immediately asked for me to give some understanding time, but they immediately asked to come and help us. But our rights have been constantly violated. We're still in a space that has three beds with six children and two adults. And last night, when I was reading my daughter's bedtime story, one of the ladies came in, she reticulated against me. I guess she pumped out that you guys, I had came down here and she came into the room and turned the lights off on me while I was reading my daughter's story. I think it looked like the minutes was going down, but I thought I was gonna have three minutes. But I'm saying that I have a right to be treated with dignity and respect. I have a right to religious liberty. I have a right to privacy and confidentiality. I have a right to be treated with cultural sensitivity. I have a right to self-termination and identity vote.
Alright, so I'll just...
And it's my sister's birthday tomorrow. Thank you very much.
Happy birthday!
Thank you very much.
Okay, great, thank you. This is my daughter, Liz Anther, and she's in a baby.
Hello, Molly.
Hi.
Hi. My name is Aya, and, um, I'm a dancer, and I would like to be... Oh, a bigger house.
So they're actually supposed to have caseworkers at these meetings to help people who are either unhoused or at risk. But I don't know if nobody is actually helping them, because I've heard that before.
John Lee, sit back and pray.
I'm asking for Vegas. Please go ahead. You know what I'm talking about, right, John Lee?
So, I'm a dreamer. I wish Los Angeles would fix this problem of homelessness. But the truth is a budget, the budget of a half a billion dollars for stolen. So why the fuck we have a woman with her children here asking you for accommodations, promising? You got a half a billion motherfucking dollars.
That's right. I don't agree with Hoppa, what Harmon says most of the time, but he's right about that.
And you, and you, and you.
I wonder what this guy's trying to say. He smelled like cigarettes so bad. This is LA. That language is not mine. I have no idea who this guy is. I, I can't even understand what this guy's saying. I have no idea what this guy's deal is. Alright, I got it set up. This is the person everybody wants to see.
Oh, that LA, um, here to just remind Ms. Ramon that she owes me an apology for how she spoke to me before the one-listed meeting we did was two weeks ago now. Um, we need lessons on how to do it correctly, and how the street people ask Mr. McCosker to be a standard for respect in this house. Um, and so I wanna help him campaign, sir, even though I don't live in your area. He's a plus. You know, this Padilla, she's come a long way. She's, 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 she's my, I'm proud of her too. So, Ms. Ramon, I'm waiting on that apology. Um, I have also asked you to please give this, this child's birthday is coming up, Christmas is coming up. Let's give them a bigger home. You know what I mean? Like, there is a lot of money there that has not been spent. Plus his family, you know, please, please, please. And thanks for the love of God, please, please. And I know Ms. Ramon is the one here, we've peaked stuff too much. Please remove the planters, welcome Elrod Hubbard Way and Fountain. It is not ADA compliant. I have a right to access the streets. Thank you.
Three inch chair says he's being harassed sexually, and he's being discriminated against. Uh, the back of my shirt says the CIA killed twenty of my friends. Again, it's mostly through, uh, needing, uh, broken energy weapons, cancer. Everyone, you'll see, if you ever look at my, uh, my dad, my mom, my br- my, uh, ex-husband, my son, my sister was killed, uh, more. There are a lot of kids besides cancer, okay? More than twenty people killed. I need someone to help me. Uh, this woman is a soul sister for me. Uh, I'm not religious like her. She's deeply religious. And local partying individuals, you're right.
Do you know why they haven't contacted, you know, caseworker for her? Yeah. Cause they're always like, we have caseworkers ready for you, and how is to order if you're... Yeah, it's just too small. Yeah, he's gonna go chase me away.
Alright, I am, Steve Padilla is here on Zola, and he's been having a hulking for about a year and a half, a couple of years here. They have turned, uh, a conspiracy that is happening, so finally, I only have a third turn. Well, everybody thought of making sure the ETA, and it is flawed. The insurance that's been, uh, from my airline, who is non-UNICEF, they have decided that they...
I'm gonna see about this food.
Seventeen thousand four hundred and twenty-four dollars a year for health care. It violates the legal way. They don't care. You can pay four and a half, you're four and a half years at Delta Airlines, working your feet. They will take over four dollars an hour for me for health insurance. They will make you pay premiums. They will take you off your overtime. I paid eight thousand six hundred dollars for health care, while Delta said my insurance was worth seven thousand nine hundred. That doesn't include the overtime. Please, please, I have seen that multiple times. The city looks at this and tailing. They can't understand the law for us, and thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ramon. You have a minute, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, sir. You know, thank the council for honoring Native Americans. This is what we Native Americans wear today. Uh, but it's interesting.
This guy's such a racist.
Ten times to speak. You have a right to hear me, but, uh, it isn't the gentleman like Mr., uh, Mr. Obama, the end. A white man that has denied me my voice is Mr. Dawson.
I don't wanna give him any more audience.
If this is Nury Martínez, who cuts your throat and disgraces everything.
So Marquise just came back in with his arms raised, because he knows this guy's a racist.
We have the public today insulting you is because of what she did and what Mr. Dawson did. Yes, you can try to stop my voice, but one thing, being here thirty-six years, you should see the stat of stuff I have. And boy, is it dangerous. And I'm actually being offered twenty-five thousand if I would turn it over. It's unbelievable what I have. Thank you.
You're going to prison, Lee. You're going to prison, Tracy.
My name is John, I live in the Port Harrow area. And I'm here to oppose the affordable housing projects that are planned over there. I'm writing each of you to oppose the projects in this neighborhood, and I, and for the affordable housing, for the Macs, for on Port Harrow there. They wanna go to a hundred eighty-third unit on a street that barely accommodates, um, parking. Um, there's a school right next to it. The traffic is horrendous over there. It's not that we're opposed to it. It's just that we have a, a downtown point eight, pretty something feasible for the area. Um, the traffic is already bad. It's already got weird. Our project's planned for the East Hollywood area within a block radius. And it's just something that we have to approach, thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is DeHua Chen. I live in East Hollywood neighborhood.
Good afternoon. My name is DeWah Chen. I lived in East Hollywood neighborhood for approximately thirty years. And we have a project coming in that is overwhelming our community and are being singled out for self-protection. And it's not fair that we are being forced to give up a important disproportionate amount of space. So, we don't think that this is a fair problem. And it's not fair that ninety percent of the city is out from these type of projects. We're opening up our community.
I do hear, see one of the LAPD sergeants in the back talking to the woman with the kids. Hopefully to help her. I mean, it's not a perfect safety net, but like, I think she's been trained up a lot. I need a safety net. Journalism needs a safety net. I think this is about development.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is DeWah Chen, I'm a East Hollywood resident. This is about the same street, Marijosa. We need doors and tenants on Marijosa to understand about giving affordable house. But between Port Haven and Santa Monica, Marijosa Street is not designed to build a new hundred eighty-two unit building. By building this apartment on Marijosa, it doesn't mean you guys are creating housing. It's only going to create disaster for our block. Nobody would be able to function their daily life on, on this street. I suggest the government official who is going to approve this project to visit the street in person to understand it's impossible next to elements of the street to build something like this. It will be leaving in hell for the new tenant of the building and for the resident of Marijosa. Thank you.
Hello, Speaker. You have a minute? The floor is yours.
Hi, uh, good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, this is regarding this main issue, uh, the E1 incentive program of one hundred eighty-four units that is planned to be built in Los Angeles. Uh, this area is being singled and targeted. That's how we feel because we look around the area and there's several structures that the same program is being committed. At the same time, is anybody to their home court? Is anybody going to look at the situation of the street? Very narrow street, two cars can very pass each other. The school traffic is right there throughout the whole lane. So, this is an impossible project. Uh, the city should have gone to look before approving anything of this bid of hundred and eighty-four units that is impossible to be built in this street. There is no such street building in this whole street.
Who's the developer? I don't know. Do you have the address? Honor Marvin Culver LLC. I'll just take a picture of that real fast.
You have a minute? Please begin. I am still waiting to the, 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 I saw those jaws and energy company in the last census, almost seven thousand four minority residents were forced out. Now, all of our received E1 projects, which are affordable, they're only moderately expensive, make up one hundred seventy thousand a year. And student market for like one thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars a month, no one in my neighborhood can afford that. All results are generally for projects that seventy percent of LA's housing market, and further exam sixteen plans of seventeen CPOs. People fear that a lot remains will leave existing affordable housing, drive the poor out, and those who are in the middle. If you're serious about providing affordable, or that, and you please your housing partner fifty percent of affordable housing projects. I tried to speak, I didn't deny any evidence, but I'm able to get into the meetings. I hope that with this come before the city council, uh, that you will actually open up the whole area.
Thank you, Doc.
Hi, Speaker. I have a minute? The floor is yours. It's not enough. Hi, I'm John from Foster Fifty-Four, just the whole of Chicago. We're still fighting the Mexican-American war, and this building has been letting Mexican illegal aliens kill citizens of all types.
I'm gonna go get lunch.
And I just want to get, let's get to the meat of it. You have to charge the illegal aliens over to ICE, and we're not talking about a house raid. We're not talking about a house raid. We are not talking about a house raid. We're talking about you deal with a criminal and their illegal activity.
I think there's some committee meetings this afternoon. Yeah, I think I, I understand. I saw Energy and Environment, and I forgot what the other one was. Yeah. I'm, I'm Zachary Ellison. I'm on Substack. So, I read about development, actually. Yeah. No, no, I mean, the city is rapidly trying to densify, right, to hit its housing goals for the state, but it doesn't mean they're doing their due diligence. Like, basically, CEQA is gone. The guy's a vile racist, just ignore him. Yeah. Yeah. It, it's, it's, it's an overbuild, right, without doing traffic studies, without doing CEQA.
The max is three, three units. The height is thirty feet.
Yeah.
They're going sixty-four feet.
Yeah, I get it. This guy's about to get kicked out. Sorry about these people. It, it actually takes away from this being a functioning government. Yeah, there's a lot of projects where they want to go very vertical.
It is going like thirty-three feet over the, over the limit.
What, he's, he's coming back. Hey, hey! Yeah, sure, sure, sure. Uh, give me, give me one second. I just gotta mute, cause I don't want to hear my phone number. You know, I, I mean, I, I have about six hundred people who read my newsletter, including other journalists, so I mean, this is something like I write about, actually, is like housing and homelessness. And how, you know, I mean, it matters how the city meets these goals. If you can just ride over anything, right, because of the Housing Accountability Act. You know, as far as, you know, any concerns about traffic, about, you know, environment, greenhouse gases, you know, views, um, you know, getting shadowed over, right, like, it, it's just a free-for-all for developers. And, um, you don't, they, they've actually empowered what's called the builder's remedy, right? Which allows developers to override, uh, any city, right? Even, even if you were in Beverly Hills, and Beverly Hills wanted to say no to this. The state government's gonna go, no, you have to build this, because they're desperate for housing. Even if the city council tries to stop it, the gov, the state governor, state governor and the attorney general will threaten to sue the city. This is what's happened in Huntington Beach and New York. Yeah. You, you would, you would think so. I, I mean, this, this is really the tightrope that we're walking with this, is that if you densify, do you ruin people's quality of life? But, so you're not, you're not alone in this, like, it, it's really hard to stop it. I mean, even if you get an attorney, right, and you file a suit, you're, the odds of your lawsuit, you know, succeeding, um, are very low. The city, you know, a single city council member can't do it. It, it can feel very hopeless. I mean, like, the best thing you can do, right, is organize the neighborhood to put public pressure on the developer. So that they have to downsize. Generally, we're just talking about downsizing the project. Yeah.
I'm just gonna close the street, folks. Half and border.
It's, I mean, this is This is why, you know, I, I mean, we have a housing crisis, right, but how we meet it matters. I, I wish, I wish I could tell you, you know, I, I've, I've tried to learn a lot about this. This is kind of like where we're at. I mean, like, I, there are projects where even they're building on sensitive, you know, wildlife habitats. And, and, you know, you can build on outdoor space unless it's protected, like ecologically protected. So, like, there's a lot of this going on. And like, of course, you're right, the money is in development. The money is for the developers, and then the way the laws
This is, uh, scam, because this is
Yeah.
Even for low-income housing.
Mm-hmm.
That's how they're presenting it, but it's not
It, it's not, it's not. And like, you know, that's certainly something like, we know, is that like, the wages are too low for people to afford what they're building. They're building for people from other places with more money who can come in and displace you.
They're just presenting it that way to get their lives.
That's how it is. Yeah, I took, I took, somebody text, somebody call. Cheers. I think there's food out here or something. Are they done? They might be done. Celebration is concluded. Let's go back in the city council. It's okay, I missed the free food. Yeah. We're in public space? Yeah, press. Yeah. I, I don't, I don't have any cards. I'm, uh, I'm Zachary Ellison, I'm on Substack. Audit's got the viewers, audit's got like a hundred and forty-six going?
I don't know if I'm gonna get the ball to change, but that's gonna be, uh, broken. Testing, testing. Alright, so, uh, so we're going to, we are, this, somebody, this Dr. Truth Bay, um, policy analyst, and, uh, one of the greatest male former and housing homeless for the last decade and a half. We have personal, uh, data that we have submitted to Los Angeles Home Services Bureau, which is a COC. Now it's coming to a head where millions, billions of dollars have been misappropriated for at least a decade, since twenty-eight years, since LSA has been in, in conception. I have a lot of families Well, we have
Yes.
Hi, Doctor, oh, I'm so sorry. I have to take this. This is my doctor's No, absolutely. Uh, so, I still hold the mic?
No, I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to cut it with these guys. I'm sorry. I'll catch up next time.
No, sure, sure. Uh, so, currently what we're trying to do is start to adapt policy accountability. Uh, not only as funding a prison, okay, but
Yeah.
There's a reason why part of this happening. We as a service provider, a service provider, uh, we work in tandem with us, try for, try for cap, uh, capacity building, uh, services provided out, outreach and gates, we name it. A lot of the numbers have been fudged to the point where they have to return that hundred and fifty million dollars on multiple days. And so, we are tired as service providers, I speak on behalf of Los Angeles, especially those who've been out. There are families that should have gotten housing a long time ago. Now this three hundred and eighty million dollars that have come to LA County by government, who about two weeks ago should not go straight to downtown one percent, should not go straight to just one or two organizations that they cherish. So, we would like to see accountability when Trump gets into office, okay? We want the Democratic Party and sanctuary seniors to not do right by the people, not scramble and save face, but actually do right by the people. That means fund get people homes that they serve, financial community as well, and help us to work with Santa California to help House of people, this is the homeless capital in the world.
There it is.
We cannot continue to have the same failed policies and, uh, special interest lobbying to actually supersede the needs of Los Angeles. So, if you want to get more information on how you can help, uh, our direct number is three two three eight eight four eight five one three. Um, and you can actually email us as well. So, again, my name is Dr. Truth Bay, a policy analyst, uh, US level. Anybody that has a complaint that, uh, either is staying in the shelter or, uh, just want to see accountability, then please give us a call.
Do you have any confidence in the audits that have happened? Uh, cause there's been a county audit, a city audit, and there's a federal audit through Judge David Carter pending. Do you think that they will listen, they, they're gonna listen at all or change?
Yeah, so Judge Carter, he actually started the audit back in twenty eighteen. That's when he started the accountability in LSA. What I would like to see is actually closure.
Yeah.
Cause again, that first audit back almost six years ago, there was no closure. And matter of fact, LA County and LA City employees stated that they have so much autonomy.
You mean the LA Alliance lawsuit?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, now that, uh, you have the county board supervisors, the homeless deputies, they state that, uh, it doesn't matter if Gavin Newsom gives an executive order
Yeah.
Two gigawatts, uh, six, seven months ago, they will still continue their way of housing, which is the reason why there are some other, because it cannot be, it cannot be the same, uh, misappropriation of funding.
Are you
I honestly would like to see results from this audit, but because it has happened before, there's closure. I'm hoping that Judge Carter, I'd like to make sure that everybody told the LA Alliance to make sure that there is closure. And to have people like our service providers to be part of that. There are many service providers that are, that are listening, that are not in the mood, and they would like to change that. So, I'm hoping in twenty twenty-five, till January, that not only accountability will be dealt, but definitely the Trump administration does something with this misappropriation of homeless funding.
Yeah, and Trump hasn't appointed, uh, Director of Housing and Urban Development yet. You know, I, I think watching that, as far as Los Angeles, people are watching that very closely, because you're right, there's a lot of money at stake. Are you aware of any embezzlement that's occurred? I think you have police coming up behind, just with his hooks. And are, are you comfortable with the recording this conversation? I, I, uh, are you aware of any embezzlement that's occurred in relation to this misappropriation of fines? Go away. Go away, we're, we're, we're trying to talk. Trying to do an interview, go away.
So, Jose
Yeah.
Found out the hard way.
Jose found out the hard way.
Mark Lee Thomas found out the hard way.
I saw Mark Lee Thomas yesterday.
Yeah, so we need people like that who have been paid to play, who have forgotten why they were in the system. It's not really them. It has been the system that allowed them to do this. The LA County, LA City is the most corrupt body of politicians in the nation.
Hmm.
It is not, uh, underserved. What we'd like to see again is organizations, organizations who actually are doing the work to get funding to that way. Families who are facing homelessness, individuals who deserve housing. When you look at these shelters, these shelters are like low-level prisons.
Yeah.
They have the same staff, they get treated the same way. Uh, the food vendors are the same as the incarceration as, as they are in these shelters. So, we need that. We need, uh, organizations like PAFICS.
Yeah.
Uh, First to Serve. Uh, a lot of these shelters, especially in, uh, six, where you have the most horrible conditions. Some places in West Hollywood and, and Santa Monica, you have better living conditions for families, but you have a concern When you have a concern with the background areas, it's always horrible. And that's ridiculous. So what we would like to see in the next three months is that the land that is available to build housing, the funding goes there. I live in the most depraved district, which is CD8. My priest Harris Dawson has been on council since 2015. And it's things like this that we're saying that it is more about the corporations, about building relationships, paying a pay, rather than for services to be provided. And then they put up these little service places, shelters, so to speak, navigation areas, and the attitudes are atrocious. When you have people going through housing, the rest of violence, trafficking, they're not gonna deal with people who can't even be nice to them, let alone that. If you're gonna be a homeless, you wanna be in a situation where you have hope, you have inspiration. But unfortunately, a lot of the clients, they are shelter bed numbers. They are dollars. So every person that's in a shelter, that shelter gets $15,000 per head. So it's a business.
It's a business.
And that's what I'd like to see changed.
Do you think there's any reforming of the homeless industrial complex?
Absolutely.
Like-
We're working now, the indictment.
Yeah.
And the audits, you know, that's a start. And so what we'd like to see is to have results of that.
Yeah.
So this is why we're requesting the Trump administration to make sure that housing and urban development are in person, because Marsha Fudge did a horrible job. And then right now, we have people that are not in the right place to help regulate all this. So what also is needed is a continuum of care, now a national czar, to do oversight in these states, and to help the states do oversight in their counties. And that's how I believe that the homeless, the misappropriation of homeless funding can be solved.
Are you concerned that Trump and criticizing Democrat-run cities but not putting forward a reform platform is missing an opportunity?
Where is the law?
Yeah.
I mean, the action is right there.
Yeah.
It's nothing, I would love to be asked, "Oh, Democrats."
Yeah, because I mean, like, I see Sebastian Ridley Thomas is a Trump supporter. And I mean, you know, his dad is a Democrat, right? Like, you know, I think, you know, people were surprised to see so many African-American males voting for Trump, but I think that this is a lot of it.
It's about action. When you think about Trump in his first term, he turned this country around. I mean, the economics was not as bad as it was. You gotta pay almost $10 for some bread and milk, that's ridiculous. When people see that, it's not about what side you're on, you gotta stop drinking Kool-Aid.
Yeah.
You gotta see the actions of what's right in front of you. And unfortunately, going to raise in California, you have a certain language, you have a certain style that you keep, like where heads are in the cloud. But what I would like to see is somebody that cares about the country, somebody that cares in all these rumors about Project 2025, so on and so forth. Uh, Project 2025, which we keep saying is gonna be pushed, that's something that we, the people, have the power when we come together to stop being fearful, but to work together and present your situation to the Trump administration. And if they fail to do so, then that's when we do the process of recall by state, process of recall with our honors, process of recall with our mayor, and that's where we have power to the people. It's not really about complaining about the national issue. First, present the issue, work with your, within your communities, to make sure that that community has its situation presented the right way to the presidential candidate. They have a duty to do right by us. But when we have the Democratic demons that have never done right by us, we can't keep calling it the kettle black. We have to continue and can be critical about this. We have to apologize to see it, and now it really is about power to the people. It's not about the rich, it's not about the middle class or the poor. We, as people, gotta come together and say, "Okay, well, if I'm rich and I'm benefiting from whatever's become the taxes that's gonna be benefited by the organization, that is not gonna help in the long run, because again, it is power to the people." So what I'm suggesting as a policy analyst, and what I would like to see, I would like nothing more to see LA City Council members work for the people. I would like nothing better to see Los Angeles border supervisors actually work in interest for the people. Number one, they did a great job by expanding and changing the system. Liti Orvath, who we give homage to, she is a great supporter of the community. She's one out of few politicians that I see that really care about the community. And the fact that she says, "Yes, they need to have more border supervisors", I think an eight-member body is correct.
Yeah.
We need to have more, five people over $49 billion in a $10 million, I'm sorry, $10 million population is not enough.
You're talking about Measure G, of course, right?
Yes, absolutely. Measure G actually opens the door for us to have a different way of having more accountability, but it's still not enough. I believe that we need to have maybe a 15-member council, as we do in LA City, why not? Because the county is big enough, you have so many unincorporated areas that are covered. So I think that is a start, but again, the proof will be in the pudding when we actually see what's at hand.
Have you been to the new La Casa meeting yet? Which is the Los Angeles County Affordable Housing Solutions Agency, which is the regional, essentially the LA County regional body. I went to the meeting the other week, and, you know, it seemed kind of like they're moving towards, you know, more financial products as a solution here, without much consideration, right, of like, if Wall Street actually wants to invest in Los Angeles. Do you think Wall Street, you know, cares about LA or no?
Absolutely not. This is Wall Street can't run every one of those things.
No.
This is really about money, we gotta keep it real. Uh, it is okay, because this is a business, we live in a capitalist society, and that's what really makes this country great, is that we have the options to scale without, you know, without protection, so to speak. But when it comes to, again, things like reparations, okay? When it comes to Black Angeles, because I am a descendant of the city, that as a Black woman, I feel that a lot of the resources are not there, as they say, even with affirmative action, so to speak, that it's not given to the certain population, because we make more money for the nation while we're in jail, while we are homeless. And so those are the things that I'd like to see. But for example, the immigration crisis. You have almost 11 million migrants that came in the last four years. Well, who did they highlight in Springfield, Ohio? Was it 10,000 Haitians? But Ukrainians and the Russians that come here, they get city jobs, they get employees.
Councilwoman Unice Fernandez.
Yes, and so we appreciate that. That's one of the ideas, actually, is one of the few that actually did prefer.
Yeah.
The longer you stay on this board, the longer, you know, that you have a different change. But we still wanna give our politicians a little bit of a doubt, which is why we say that if you don't do right by us, the people, the difficult people, they need to start the process of recall. Because we haven't really exercised that process, except for Gavin Newsom. I worked for twice, and it didn't work. So start with your local city council members, recall them. If you really are, if you really feel that they are not focusing on the constituent issues, but nine times out of 10, they may not, maybe because it's overwhelmed. Again, the system has to be changed. I just feel that we have so much opportunity now to see accountability. But this federal audit right now, I wanna see exactly how that goes. Is it closing? Let me get my bag. Oh, okay.
Thank you for speaking with me.
Thank you, thank you.
Sure. I am Zachary Ellis. Yeah, I'm happy to show my contact. You can find me on, I ran on Substack, actually, about housing homelessness and other things.
And then, do you have a contact?
Yeah. All right, I'm mute. Yeah, I'm doing everything I can to, you know, do what journalism is supposed to do, right?
Yes.
No, they lied to you. Your bag isn't there, that's why I was getting worried. I think they mean closed session, not special, special.
But they should allow me to-
Yeah, they should, it's Los Angeles Department. Do you have a bag?
I have my bag, it's in there.
Yeah.
Do you have the key for this?
No, no, they shut up my hand, they pushed the menu to one further.
Right, but I need to get my belongings in there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, it's smart!
Yeah, if you grab LAPD, they can probably get you back in your stuff. Yeah, they said special, not closed, and I, like... Because that's actually an important distinction between a closed, you know, executive session, you know, talk about legal matters and things like that, versus a special item. This is Controller's office? Sanitation? Yeah, I think they went into closed session, not special.
Nonetheless, um-
Yeah. Yeah, he said special, but he should have said closed, because the two are different. A special is a special item that's being added to the agenda outside of the Brown Act, versus closed session, which is an executive session where they talk about things like legal matters. Maybe they can bring your stuff?
Yeah, we're starting at 1:30.
I think she needs to get her stuff out.
Yeah, no, we can come in.
They're not in closed session, are they?
No.
No.
No, 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 they adjourned, it's just the 1:00 meeting-
Yeah, she needs to get her stuff, and then she'll be back out. Are they doing committee at 1:30?
There is a committee here at 1:30.
Yeah.
You here for that one? You're welcome.
Yeah, I might go eat and come back. I just wanted to make sure she got her stuff out, because I was interviewing her about our housing and homelessness crisis. Which, of course, the LAPD knows very well, because you guys are the people on the street dealing, you know, with our recordly, you know, high amount of- Yeah, exactly. Usually it doesn't disappear. People are pretty good here, usually? Did you get it? You're in luck. Good talking with you. All right, so folks, I think we're gonna go on break, and then I might come back this afternoon, or I might just do emails, because I have a lot of email behind. So- Our wall of shame, Kevin DeLeone looks terrible. I think Kevin's been taking that loss pretty hard. I mean, not shaving, sweating buckets, it's pretty obvious. McCosker's behaving, Tracy Park was chatting the entire meeting. Imelda was pretty respectful, Katie kind of respectful. I think we're actually missing Krikorian, because at least Krikorian did things. Harris Dawson, just, he wants to shut down the Gaffly population. And the harder you fight them, the harder they fight back. Unice is the same, at least to some people. Blumenfeld loves the animals. Monica Rodriguez is an animal. Kern Price, felonious. John Lee, corrupt. Hugo, I don't know why Hugo isn't here today. And that's your LA shitty council. Oh, and Heather Hutt, of course, our formerly-appointed replacement city council member. Los Angeles Times here. So, the LA Times, and the other, they actually have an office here. So he's just gonna go back into his office, the media suite, where they make the news. It's a journalism tool. I mean, you can do interviews on the spot, you can hold people accountable video, right? You otherwise might not hold accountable. He must have had a deadline or something, we'll see what the LA Times has coming for us. There's cameras down here. I'm not sure what's going on down here. And then I'm gonna get out of here, because I think it's about to be time. I don't think this 1:30 really pertains to me. Of course, the Olympics are coming. Good Lord, help us, this city is such a mess. And we're gonna be doing the Olympics. Mayor's office, filming, and then this is the bridge over to City Hall East. I guess they're doing Native American Heritage Month filming down there for the city, probably? I miss the free food. Because there's no lunch, like a free lunch, and Los Angeles is full of that stuff. My flip isn't working, all right. Guys don't wanna see me anyways, I'm looking good today. But I am gonna take a break here from YouTube-ing. Hope everybody's enjoyed LA shitty hall.